Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, a public comment. Is there anyone here for a public comment? Doesn't look like it. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Once again, this is my reports for the authorization of payroll bills for town fund, general assistance, and road and bridge, sewer, and then the other reports, social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, and transportation and financial. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, now in the discussion of potential action, an approval of minutes. Let's get a motion to approve in a second, then we can any discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have one item on the motion. I don't have my minutes here, I'm trying to find them. On the motion, just the minutes. Anyway, it was the decision on the compensation, where it says two to five percent. I believe the two to five percent was approval for two to five percent range for discretion for the supervisor and administrator. So we have discretion to decide between two and five percent. It's not limited two to five, because over five percent, we'd bring it back to the board, and the board would have to approve. So I think this motion was more for that. A motion to approve a range salary increases from two to five percent with the discretion of the supervisor and administrator. So I think that adjustment needs to be made.
Okay, can I? Okay, 'cause I gave him my minutes.
Okay.
So this one.
Right.
With the discretion of the administrator.
Yeah, it would be the discretion of the supervisor within two to five percent. So I guess at this point, I would ask for a motion to amend the minutes to reflect the discretion regarding the two to five percent.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do I have to? I'm trying to remember here if we have to vote on the original motion.
Do we vote on the amendment and then the motion? Or we vote on the minutes as amended?
I should've looked at that ahead of time. Anyway, at this point, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna shortcut it. I'm gonna say, I wanna take the, is there any discussion on the amendment?
No.
If not, can I, let's take a roll call vote on the amendment, and then after it's amended, then we'll vote on the original motion for the minutes.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. So what that means is that within that range that you all approved, two to five percent, we have the discretion to provide that increase in the salary based on merit, basically is what it is. Anything over five percent that we propose would have to come back to the board for board approval. Okay? All right, then we go to, so we have approved the minutes, we now go to, any presentations? I don't believe we have any presentations tonight, do we, Paul?
No, sir.
Okay. And reports, the assessors' report.
This last month, I attended the Co-County Township Assessors' Meeting, also the Toc Dinner Meeting. I also had a meeting with the Board of Directors for Co-County Township Assessors Association. It's been very interesting. Last month, we formed an ad hoc committee with some of the senior chief deputies to work with the new people coming into the Co-County Assessors' Office to give them an idea where we're finding flaws in the program. It was a really excellent exchange, and I think we've got a good working relationship with the person who is now in charge of taxpayer services. Because it was so successful, we're going to do it again, but this time, we're going to do it with the head of their permit departments. We've had continual problems with the new program, things that have been rectified, but we were, of course, a little chagrined when they gave us the format, and there were not enough characters for Arlington Heights, and they would not allow us to truncate. So, you know, or Elk Grove Village. So, you know, we've been working through problems like that, but we're going to go to the senior deputies and assessors from those jurisdictions to meet with the head of the permit department to see if we can work out some of the bugs in those areas. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions for the assessor?
No.
If not, clerk.
Okay, I have a written report. We had three FOIA requests in May that are listed there. And then also, the township will be participating in the Mount Prospect Parade on the Fourth of July. And we have a good number of board members and staff members and their families participating. So I will be getting more information on Thursday from Mount Prospect, and I'll send out some more details.
Okay. Paul, is there, in Suelon, is there any sort of trend to these FOIAs? I mean, I was looking at the trends, and two of them were property, and one of them was the rural fire district. Is there, these are, it's not like you're seeing a series come through on the same issue, per se.
No. I just was showing, Suelon, we got one, lots on vacation, and it's just five different points, and one of them was random words, anything that was from the clerk or to the clerk.
During your time.
In a period of time that should overlap both of you, then they wanted documentation for that. And I have to go back to James, because it seemed like there was some things that we needed to, you know, find out in there. Sorry, those words really, they're not talking about emails that were sent, I mean, you'd have to go through every one of them to see if that worked.
Are we on TV?
Of course, you did it via search on the data, or the data that's in the email account. But, I don't know, I just wanna go back and double check everything, because it's a ton of stuff. And I don't think, I read several of them, I couldn't find any of those words that were in there, so.
Okay.
That's a little, have to look at it again. No, I, we, anyway, we've got a couple smaller ones, and there hasn't been nothing out of here.
It was interesting, the one that you had on the new report about the rural fire district, where it appears to me they're trying to see if the township was collaborating in some way with the villages.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that's what it was intended to.
Yeah, we've had two or three of those. This one, actually, this lady asked a month before for the same information, but instead of putting Elk Grove Township, she put Elk Grove Village. So we said we had nothing. Then she realized and redid it. But we haven't had any more about the fire district, no.
Okay.
Same effect, I don't think there was anything on any of those, from rural fire or whatever.
Right, yeah.
And we've had several more here recently that are really broad in nature, too, you had said, that I think you guys are talking about very broad, asking a broad range of things that.
Oh, yeah, and that was those big ones that went to other townships.
Would you, may I want to explain what those are to the board, or a little bit?
I don't really remember all the details of what they were, but I don't know if they said that they were, it was just things they wanted as far as a broad range of things, and they were just like helter-skelter, didn't make like any sense, that they were trying to piece something together, just have something from here and something from there.
And they don't have to have an individual name on them either, who it's from.
This one, that I was just talking to Suelon about, said it's a.
Yeah. Yeah, they can ask for, people can ask for a wide variety of things, and you really can't question it. You have to respond if it's public information. If it's, there is some constraints in terms of private information, where we will usually work with the attorney on that. But this can, they can ask for massive amounts of information, and at a certain, they can also ask for stuff to be printed out, but there's a limit on the amount. I think at some point, if they're asking for tons of policies to be printed out, then I think there's some limitation, or you can put some limitation.
You can charge after 50 pages.
That's right, you can charge them, begin to charge them at some point. So we've been very fortunate with this FOIAs, but recently, we've been, to me, it appears we've been in FOIAs that are fishing, in some ways are fishing for something. I'm not, we're not sure exactly what they are, but the beneficiary, and some other townships have been getting the same emails. So we're not sure. We've been getting some on the rural fire district, which is an issue, understand that, but these have been just out there. I mean, just tons of stuff they want, and I'm not sure what it's for. But we're responding, we're providing that, if it's information we can respond to. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
The clerk's report? Okay, then the supervisor's report on the construction. I will follow up on this a little bit later in the new business section, but under the current, in the current situation, things are moving slowly. They dug up the asphalt in the area where the bike safety and the challenge course will be. It was a lot more asphalt than they expected, blacktop than they expected. They had to go down multiple inches lower. Dale had some reasons for that, which are interesting. But, and they've also cleared out, demolished the salt bins, and they've got positioned some of the new drainage equipment, or how would you say, drainage pipes and so forth they needed to have out there. But we haven't gone much further than that. The bathroom and the youth slash community room has really kinda gone to a stop, it's about halfway done. And so there's a little, I have a little bit concerned that they need to start moving forward a little more. I think there's issues with labor, with workers and labor, and maybe even unions, I'm not sure. But we need to address that at some point. So we've got, we're, we are into the process, but it's not going particularly fast right now. All right, the next point, is with there was, so you're all, I think you're all aware there was an investigation that had to be done personnel-wise due to some allegations. That investigation has been completed. It was determined that either some of the allegations could not be collaborated, or if they were collaborated, they did not rise to an issue of breaking township policy or ethics. All the parties involved have been sat down and results discussed with. There are some recommendations that came out of it for the township as a whole, 'cause once again, once you get into something, you discover some other issues that maybe you need to address. And there's three or four, four or five recommendations that came out of that, largely dealing with communication internally in departments, and then between the departments, that needed to be addressed or looked at. If you guys have any interest in going in deeper and reading more about the investigation or the recommendations that have come out of that, the report is available for you upon request, and you can read it, you have access to it. But I think that's adequate to go over right now. Okay, brush pickup, just as a comment there, I don't know if we mentioned this, we did change contractors. We have a new contractor doing brush pickup that I believe has done a good, is doing a good job, but is much more, is not, is costly at all. So it's been, it's been a, I don't think any loss in terms of effectiveness or efficiency or whatever you wanna call it, while we've saved a good amount of money by doing that. Remember that we don't have to, we're not required to do brush pickup. That's something that we just have always provided traditionally, and we've continued to do it. Repolo, we have postponed, I think as you're aware, the signs, putting up the signage for traffic and for the trucks and the traffic in that area. The reason, we had addressed that, because there was trucks going through that subdivision, and the residents were concerned about it, and they needed more signage. We worked with the state police, came up with a plan, but we postponed that because we're now under the understanding, we have been for a couple months, that they're being purchased by a developer who's gonna put in a data warehouse. They will buy the homes, tear them all down, and put a data warehouse in there. It is not, the deal hasn't been finalized, but we just don't feel it's appropriate to go in and put new signage in, and then it'll all be torn out in six months or something like that. So that's been delayed. Once we know for sure, we'll send a letter to all the residents saying that, you know, we are delaying it, and here's why. On the rural fire district, which largely involves Repolo as well, that area as well, because they're, all the members of the rural fire district board are from Repolo. It appears that they've been discussing about dissolution. I think the loan they receive from the county is being rapidly diminished, and they're collateral on that, or collateral, the funding behind that to pay that off was their tax receipts. So they don't have the same tax receipts coming in, and I believe they're at a point now where they're gonna, there's gonna have to be some negotiations, or legit, I mean real negotiations, between the villages and the rural fire district. We have offered, in our sense of the board, offered to arbitrate. We've had no response back. We've also offered to host a meeting between the villages and the legislatures, and the reason that is, is that for some reason, they just go bankrupt, or they just close down because they run out of money, then there needs to be, the fire marshal does not respond immediately, it will take a while for him to get involved, but there can be legislative action to allow the villages to set up an SSA or a special taxing district, and allow them to move forward with the coverage with an SSA and service. So we had offered to hold a meeting whereby the legislatures and the villages can get together, and we would help sort of moderate that, where they can get on board so that legislative action potentially could be done quickly, and they can move forward quickly. I think it's a little bit unfortunate, that I think the rural fire district board realizes that if they go bankrupt, or if they don't work out an agreement with the village, that the villages will still have to respond to any fires. I mean, that they're not gonna let a house burn down just because it's not their responsibility. They will, they will do it. And I think that gives them, I don't wanna say leverage, but negates the reason to really negotiate. I think the villages are offering more money again for the assets, that money would be used to reduce the tax levy for the special district for the next couple of years. But I think this board, what the board really wants is to get the money given to them so there could be a tax rebate. And the villages feel that that's not necessary, because it's not like the residents have equity in the rural fire district. Rather, it, what we're basically, what they really should be doing is, these assets turned over to the villages so they can continue the coverage of the area. But they're also, but they are offering now to put money towards the assets so the tax levy for the remaining people in the rural fire district can have their taxes reduced for a year or two. And I think they also now are offering to give an amount of money for them for winding down the rural fire district as well, too. In other words, give them money to help them operate on while they wind down, particularly if they are almost out of money, which it appears they are. So they've been very, I think, they're very willing to compromise. I think the direction they don't wanna go is just to buy the assets and give the assets to the current board or rural fire district, because that money then would not be going back into the community for the ongoing fire protection. That money then would just be rebated to whoever happens to live in that area at this time. So I, at this point, we have expressed our interest, I mean, our concerns, and we've offered now, I've offered to help facilitate a meeting with the legislatures. We've offered to arbitrate between Repolo and, or the rural fire district and us, and the villages. So there's three, you know, there's, we've done basically as far as we go this way. We have no control over the board anymore, it's by referendum. They're elected by referendum, not appointed. It's a separate, independent taxing body. We established it, and at one time, we appointed members to it, but since there was a resolution to change it to an elected position, our involvement is more in terms of our concern for our residents that live in the area that are gonna be left, has this whole, left without official coverage for a period, potentially a period of time. So any questions on that? Okay.
George, who are the legislative bodies?
That would be the state. So you would have state reps, state senators, is who we'd invite to attend, and make sure that they're aware of the issues associated with this, make them aware of what would need to be done to be able to resolve this quickly, and what we would, what would be needed of them to make this happen. The villages would probably come in with legislation already written up for them, not whether they wanna accept it or change it, but they would want the legislatures to be on board and be able to jointly push this through quickly. And I don't know if, how many are really that, so that'd be county and state representatives, not federal.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll see, we'll see if they, if we need, if we need to go there. Offered to arbitrate, offered to host a meeting with legislatures and villages, and expressed our concerns to that rural fire district board. And I am, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that there will be disruption in services, and maybe not in a major way, but in some way, and there's no need for this, really. Okay, if no other questions on that, and seniors, well, I'll get to that at the end. I just wanna remind you, we're still looking for a therapist for adult and family counseling. We have a waitlist, we're trying to add another therapist. There have been some interviews, but nothing that we would want to pursue at this point. But we are actively looking for a therapist. We also are in discussions with Jocelyn Center at this point, and would be open to other, pursuing other vehicles for a neurological psychologist. This is of somebody who would be assist in the testing for IEPs in schools. So usually, when the IEP is to be written up, the parents will seek an independent evaluation, and it's very expensive. So this would be a service that we would provide to those parents that are seeking an IEP for their student, but who can't necessarily afford on their own to do that. And we would have a neurological psychologist who would be able to provide that testing to allow a kid to be able to get appropriate IEP established in their school, grade school, high school, whatever it is. And there's a, there's a need for that. We're also at some point here, gonna be hiring a bike safety coordinator, as you would expect. So when we get the bike safety course set up, or we feel it's gonna be set up, there is some discussion of whether that individual will just be a seasonal part-time, or whether that individual will be full-time, and in the non, in the seasons where they're not bike safety, would also then be with Renee's team as a facilitator for youth programs. It would give her another part-time person, well, it would give her another person, this would be a full-time person, but their primary responsibility during two seasons would be bike safety, and the other two seasons would be assisting the youth services program. That's still being looked at, that's just, I'm just mentioning to you that that's consideration. Another issue in terms of potential hiring would at some point possibly be working with Northwest Community Hospital, an organization for a part-time nurse, who would provide assistance in terms of appointments for wellness, and in terms of other issues particularly associated with seniors. That's, once again, just something that's being bantered around. And then finally, so that you know, I just can't do all of this right, but we have problems finding handymen to do work in the building, plus we're also paying about $3,000 a month for cleaning services. And there is some consideration of maybe at some point, we'd hire a maintenance person that would also, would not only be a handyman, but also would do general cleanup in terms of maintaining our facilities here. You probably still would need a cleaning contract, but that may be reduced to once or twice a month rather than an ongoing one. But that's just things that we throw out there that we need to consider as we grow, both in terms of our footprint, as well in terms of our programs. And all this has to be done within the bounds of our financial capabilities. Any questions on that? Just wanted to get, lay out there some of the thought process going forward. Any questions there? Let's see, on the Toc Conference, I thought it was really appreciated, as many board members showing up as they did, I thought that was really great. I thought there was some good sessions that we could learn a little bit from, listening to what other townships are doing. I thought Izzy did a nice job on her, on her panel that she served on. And we came out of, I put the email out of the information that you guys had kinda fed to me, and I think two things we'll do right away. I talked to Paul, is we will begin, as soon as possible, providing photos for passports. We will charge for them, but we'll provide photos. And the other thing is perhaps licenses. Paul, how does that, the licenses, what is that?
I don't think about it.
No, you have to worry, you have to discover more. You said that'd be relatively easy enough for us to do.
Really, yeah, I've heard the different townships talk about it, and I think a couple of them have it, and it was just brought up at administrators' meetings, we have to, it was just like they were doing it, it wasn't in very detail.
Yeah, yeah. So those are two things that very quickly, we're gonna try to pursue to see. The other items on here, we'll, you know, we can get into discuss. One of the ones I will throw out there in that regard for you guys to think about is with seniors. As we develop our senior program, right now, our focus on benefits in terms of transportation, in terms of ship program for, you know, identifying the best Medicare programs for them, in terms of assisting them in ensuring that they're getting the benefits they deserve as, or that they are entitled to, as well as some other programs. The question is, and this is something at some point, I'll maybe look for a discussion on for the board, or you can talk to me individually, do we wanna continue to be focused on services in terms of benefits? Or do we, and/or do we want to move into the social service, the social side? Bingo, exercise classes, you know, trips, senior trips. Is that something that we wanna add to our program, or is that something we wanna leave for other organizations to do? Frisbee Center, the, you know, the District 214 Foundation, or not Foundation, but their community education. Do we want to, is that an area we feel that we should move into, or is that an area that we should, we should not pursue at this point and focus more on the benefit side, where there aren't as many people doing that? So that's something to think about in giving the staff, giving me to give the staff recommendations in terms of our interest. The, there is an MTA meeting coming up on the 12th. That's the Metropolitan Township Association. If you remember, maybe you guys probably don't, but TOY, the Township Officials of Illinois, is focused on all the townships in. Illinois, is focused on all the townships in Illinois. Well, the majority of the townships are rural. They aren't suburban or urban, and as a result, their focus is a little bit more in the direction of what the rural townships need. So an, an MTA was established, which was the Metropolitan Township, so is this, is that, I think it is.
Is it Metro Metropolitan?
Metro Township, whatever. And, and it's focused on suburban and the, the suburban and urban type, urban, more urban type townships with, where we're addressing our issues, which are a little bit more social services and, and tax services and so forth. That meeting, we're a member of that, and that meeting that we're hosting is on the 12th of July here, and Senator Laura Murphy will be presenting at, at that. She, she covers part of our township. She's a Democrat from, I don't, I'm not sure where, where her actual hometown is.
Des Plaines.
Des Plaines.
Des Plaines?
Sure, Des Plaines, all of them.
Des Plaines, okay. What time is that meeting usually, the MTA?
Six o'clock.
Seven?
It was six.
Okay, seven. So once again, I mean, it's one of these things that if you're free and you're available, I think it would be valuable to attend and listen and hear something, hear a little bit what's going on and become familiar with what this group is, because we're a member of it, and we're hosting it.
Didn't you just send something out?
Yeah.
Didn't you just send something out?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I think I did. I don't remember.
You did.
Okay. Then the, the other thing is, in your, are they, are you guys getting Perspective yet?
Not yet, it's, it's.
Are they getting the Perspective magazine?
No, not yet, I don't think so. I contacted them and they said that they sent out the, which is put all the information in there.
Okay, but you guys should be getting this, and this, this month was the first time information about registering for the, for the Illinois Annual Educational Conference in Springfield. That's November 12th through 14th. And once, once again, you don't have to go down for the whole conference. A lot of people go down on Sunday, come back Monday night, or during the day on Tuesday. It runs through Wednesday, midday Wednesday, but you, you don't need to stay for the whole thing. But if you can go, once again, particularly newer members, I recommend participating.
And that's November?
12th through, through the 14th.
That's always scheduled on Saturday weekend.
It's always like right after the election, too.
Yeah.
If there's an election that year.
Yeah, yeah. And so we usually, we go down on Sunday, sometimes carpool, sometimes not. On Sunday afternoon, get down there later in the afternoon, a group of us will get together usually, go out to dinner, and then the next morning is the, is the guest speaker and the business side of the meeting, and then in the afternoon you have the educational session, sort of like which we had at the, at the TAC conference here, but a lot more. And then on Monday evening, we usually get together as a group, because some of our staff members will be down there, get a chance to spend some time with them, and then Tuesday is educational session as well, as well. There are sessions all during the day there. Usually on Wednesday, it's, it's like the trustees group gets together and the, and the supervisors group gets together, but that you don't, you definitely don't have to worry about. And then the, the last thing I'll throw out there is parade. I really appreciate everyone participating. We want to have as much of a presence as possible. We'll have the food pantry truck and one of the buses, and we just have always for years sort of operated under the radar, done our job, but now we want to make sure people know we're out there and that we have a lot of services and a lot of things they can take advantage of, and this is one way we catch attention. This and the Mount, and the Elk Grove Parade in fall, and then a number of, some of the special events like the, like the Black Party or the Market Days and things like that will participate. Those often our staff will take care of, but the parades, elected officials usually participate in. Okay, is there any other questions for me in terms of what's going on?
Just a correction, the MTA quarterly meeting starts at six here.
Six, okay, six o'clock.
They'll all come for dinner?
Well, we haven't, the other ones we went to are like at restaurants, too, like at Jamison's and stuff. And I was by the, just, I was by, you know, drove down Landmeyer on Saturday.
Yeah.
And there was a garage sale.
Yeah.
It was right on the corner there, it was like, right on Landmeyer, that house that's right on the corner there, it's a big one there, and they had a sign out front that said, "Final closeout, we're moving," or something, you know? So I'm like, they're moving, you know?
Yeah.
Not everybody is, but they're moving for sure.
Everybody's, yeah, everybody's cleared out. What do, what do we have for dinner that night?
I don't know, I'll have to figure it out. If I got any comments.
Do we have to order our soufflés ahead of time?
Yeah, because it takes a chef a while to do it.
Your steak ahead of time.
Yeah, right, right.
Chef, Chef Paul?
Yeah.
Chef Paul is either cooking it.
All right, that's, it's a, it's a good organization, because it's more focused on what our, our specific township needs are, and they got a, a good group. And, and we need to be involved, otherwise hand, handover run the whole thing, so we have to stay involved.
It's a good thing to be at, because you get all these different townships that have their different levels, some are small, some are rural, from us, others are bigger than us, and do twice as much as we can.
Yeah, it's, it's another way of hearing what other people are doing, how they're doing it, and make sure that we can, we can kind of approach some of these problems in a unified fashion. Okay, that's my report. Can I get a motion to approve the elected official reports?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
There's no old business, under new business, we have the amended 2000, 2002 to 2003 budgets that we need to be approved. You all, we've, we've presented them, we've had them on the table for the public to review, and tonight we, we vote to approve them, correct, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, this is the, and if you remember, we have to have a balanced, the budget has to be, has to be balanced. We can transfer between IDIMs up to, up to 10%, but sometimes due to unexpected developments where, where funds have to be adjusted more than the 10% allows, we need to do an amended budget, looking backwards. So we have ordinance 2022-01, which is the 2022 to 2023 Town Fund Social Services and Sewer Budget. That is the amended budget. Is there a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a, a first and a second. Any questions, any discussions on this amended budget? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 2000, 2022-02RD, or Road District, that's the 2002, 2003 Road Department Budget, as amended, once again, same situation, and you've all had time to review it. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right, now, quick discussion on expansion of the community room and grant. Representative Musman has, has requested a, a grant from the state on our behalf for, assist us in our, our community room and the, and the different projects we're developing on their back property. They had a situation where she was notified, well, all the state reps and safety were notified that there are certain amount of funds were available. I don't know if they came federal or if they were state, and they had three days to make a decision as to where they wanted to go. She had $400,000 to allocate. So we, they chose us as one of the people, one of the groups that they were allocating funds, that they, she was a request to grant for, largely because she had been here and then saw what work we were doing in the back on the bike safety and challenge course, and the youth, the youth programs room, and, and a variety of other things. And so she requested a $100,000 grant, it was approved. That does not mean we will get it all. We have to fill out a, a certain paperwork, and then it's provided in tranches. And you usually need your, your, your benefactor to stay in office, or it disappears sometimes. I think there'll be no problem with her staying in office, but nonetheless, we want to move forward this as quickly as we can. Due to that, what we, we, if you remember, we had already added on to our, to our, expanded our, our program in the back area there, to take the bike safety room, youth services bike safety room, and make it a youth, a youth services community room, so that we didn't have to use this all the time. It would allow Renee and Ed to have a youth space, but it could also be used for community purposes. If we have, you know, we have two groups that want to meet, and they don't have a youth program, we could use that. There was a storage room associated with that for her storing her youth services equipment. There's a bathroom that we upgraded and improved that allows kids to come in either in that program or from the bike safety and challenge course to come and use the bathroom. What we're looking at possibly doing now, since we're going to have additional funds, is to, if you're looking from the back forward into that room, to the left, towards the east, there is a room behind there, which is a tool room. If we break through that wall and create a door there, we can take that tool room and convert it into an office. And that office would potentially become the youth services room. It would serve two purposes. One, we need more, if we hire another therapist, we need more space in the adult and family service area, and that would free up an office for us. Second, it would put the youth services team back by their, their, their program room, back by the challenge course, back by bike safety, which will fall under, probably fall under youth, is, is a broader responsibility, and it would put them back where they're working most of the time. So we are looking at adding that, and I would, wanted to get a sense of the board that there was general approval, approval of that, and before, before we begin developing any sort of architectural work or any other work. It will not be particularly expensive, but nonetheless, it's, it would be an additional expense. This $100,000 grant gives, gives us a lot more ability, because we already budgeted most of this work, it gives us ability to expand a little bit what we're doing. We would probably also with that money add some technology, like a, what do you call it, whiteboard, or what do you call the?
Smartboard?
Smartboard, smartboard, whiteboard, this shows you how old I am. A smartboard, and TVs, and, and, and systems that can be used by the, in the community room. Another thing, and this is not part of what I'm, well, let's look at this first, and I'll mention something else. So I'd like to get a, a sense of the board, and I'm just, I'm just going to ask for any, any feedback from you all first, and then have, then I'm going to ask for a, a yea or nay on, on whether this is, be something you're interested in. Is there any questions on that? So the youth would be, we would, that community, that youth services slash community room in the back would, would be just that. There wouldn't be bike safety in there anymore. And we've already kind of gone through this. You have the bathroom there, you have storage, another storage room back there, and then we would be establishing an office, and the old tool room back there cleaned out, an office would be created. That would be kind of a youth services area that could also be used for community purposes, and would be tied with bike safety and tied with the challenge course. The bike sa, the bikes would probably be moved to either road and bridge space, or I mean, we can store them most anywhere. So is there any questions or any problems or issues that any of you would have in that regard?
I got a question.
Yeah.
Where are you going to put that plow truck at?
Which, the what?
The small plow truck.
The plow truck would probably be moved into the, the main, the main garage area. We've got, we've got room to store it there.
Okay.
The, the, the old road and bridge space will, you know, right now there's a lot of options to use it for, but most likely, at, at the nearer term, probably be used for washing the buses, washing the buses, for washing them down, sort of a car wash space. We don't need it for other purposes. We're, we're in the process for, under surplus, selling surplus, which you guys already declared it surplus, the chipper and the trailer, those are all being put up for auction in a, in a, a company up in Wisconsin that does this. We sold the Mack truck already directly to, in Northfield, and now we're putting these up on an auction, auction site to get sold off. So all of our stuff will be out of there except for the truck with the plow, the smaller truck with the plow, we're retaining that just as a backup in case there's some problem with snow plowing. Art, our field director on road bridge can drive that, can use that if he needs to. But that would be moved into the, the main garage space is where it would be kept.
Okay, and then the second question is, when are you going to have the auction?
Paul, when is, you know, what's the status on, on, it's not, we don't do the auction, we have an auction service that we use, yeah?
I talked to Izzy when I got back today, she said that she was, finished up this week.
This week? Finish up?
There's a ton of information that they're requesting that we don't have, she's been trying to wing it, because they, if they have equipment like, you know, plows and trucks and stuff, they want to know how often the oil is changed, how many hours the machines have on them, you know, all these various things, which we can't provide.
So we're, it's, I guess what Paul's saying is that we're, they're requesting, the service we're using is requesting additional information on all the equipment, some of the stuff we have not traditionally maintained, so she's having to dig deeper to find the stuff. Once they, once that's provided, then they, they put it up for auction, and I think in this situation, they're nationwide, but in this situation, whatever the best bid is, we take, I don't, yeah. It's not like there's a minimum bid, and if they don't, it's not hit, it doesn't sell, these are just done, whatever, whatever we get, we get.
We, we put in a, we put in a dollar amount that we're looking for.
But we?
If it doesn't, if, we, we can put a price.
Oh, we can do that, okay.
So it's got a reserve.
That you would talk to that doesn't do that.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, whatever it gets bid on, whether it's a dollar or a million dollars.
So the one we're using is the one with the?
The one where we're going to get here and see.
Okay, I, I thought we were using, I thought we were using the other one, okay.
That's why it's taking our longer time, because just trying to research and find out what it's really worth, ours based upon the condition it is compared to what is out there similar or selling.
Right. So we can put a minimum, minimum price in, if they don't, doesn't hit it, then it just, it doesn't sell, right? Is that what you're saying?
If it doesn't sell, or if somebody, I mean, if they have the price out there and it's relatively close, I think that.
You could just say, fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're trying to clear, clear all that, clear all that out, because there's no value in us maintaining that. We can reallocate those resources, and that's not going to be huge, but we can reallocate those resources to other purposes.
How many bikes do we have?
A lot, the whole room is full.
Are they in good condition?
Well, we, we had the last bike safety person, director, before things got shut down, we had her go in and clean out some, but she only cleaned out.
Yeah, not very many, less than.
Not very many, because she fell in love with the bikes. Hey, she was great, she ran, but she loved the bikes, you know? So we didn't get rid of that many, and I think, Paul, before we get up and running again, we'll go through and more aggressively weed them out, and if we're missing certain sizes or, that are needed, then we'll, we'll purchase them.
Is there a chance to have the Vanguard students work on them again?
Yeah.
Did we used to have that?
Vanguard.
Students from Vanguard used to come work on the bikes?
That's 214's special ed area.
Or, yeah, alternative school.
Oh, never heard of them.
So must have been before your time before COVID.
But Sandy, I had asked her about some, you know, body coming to work on it, and she says she could never find anybody. I mean, she had talked to various people, and they'd say yes, and they'd do a couple, and then, I don't know, older, older gentlemen, I think, were the ones that were doing it as, they kind of liked to do it.
Well, we can, we can re, we can reach out to Vanguard, yeah, but I, but some of these bikes need to be cleared out, just.
They're, they're in terrible shape.
Are we going to have like a sale on them, or what are we going to do with them, scrap them?
Well, we'll just.
We'll figure it out.
I mean, they're not, they're not even worth doing a garage sale on, to be quite honest. You know, like the police will sometimes do a bike sale. Some of these wouldn't even be worth, worth doing that. Maybe we'll donate the ones that are reasonable somewhere. And then we'll, we'll supplement that either, you know, we'll go, we'll probably go to the police departments and say, if you've got any bikes that are in decent shape that we could use for the bike safety, we'd appreciate, you know, the donation. But then after that, we'll still probably maybe, maybe buy some newer ones to, because you know, certain kid, you have a, certain bikes are, you need a lot of a certain bike, and then you get some kid that's already, is 10 years old, has a beard and three kids. then you get some kid that's already, is 10 years old and has a beard and three kids. You have another kid like me, that's, you know, that's, you know, two foot tall and still running around with no hair, you know what I mean? So it's, we need, we need a mix, but there's a certain size that is the most common for the boys and girls that we work with. The other thing I will say about the Bike Safety is that the houses, where we had thought about maybe asking the high school shop classes to ask them to build, there's also a thought that maybe we would go out to businesses and have them sponsor a house, and then would be here for the grand opening, and would be able to, you know, they would sponsor a house on the course. We could have it made professionally. Those are the things that are being discussed. So I guess at this point, what I'd ask, is there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for just a verbal, sort of yea or nay on the addition of the Youth Services Office.
Well, I think that's a great idea, because it's going to streamline youth services, and it's also foresight for the counseling, because then it'll be open for the therapist. It's, I think that's a win-win on both services.
Good. Any other, anything else? Any other comments or questions there?
No.
Okay. All of those that would favor us adding the office to the plans, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That gives us general direction, then. All right. So that's great with the grant, the Youth Services Office, the bikes, the bikes being cleaned up and maybe moved to one of the other rooms, and the equipments being, the equipment in there right now, in the, particularly in the road bridges being, is going to be sold through a auction surplus, is going to be sold through an auction. I will mention one other thing, too. The other thought process down the line is the big room we have back there, not the garage, but the other big room that we have in the back on the west side. There's some thought, depending on what this $100,000, what it really means to us, is going in and have that cleaned out, really cleaned out, maybe a new floor put in, and then it set up with storage, more organized storage capabilities for the food pantry, as well as maybe the medical closet. And what I mean by that is, rather than stuff, have helter-skelter out there, pallets here and pallets there, is we would clean that space up, and then be able to have certain areas where different types of food were stored, canned or boxed goods, so they'll be organized, and we could keep it in a much more organized and sanitary way. And we'd also maybe then also move, have an area back there for the Bike Safety. Eventually, that could turn into a big community room, but for right now, I think a cleaned up, a little more organized storage space would, I think, benefit us. It's not, it's not, it's not going to be particularly expensive, that is, either, but I think it puts that room to better use. So this, to mention that. Okay. Is there any other discussion, or that's new business, is there any other discussion and comments from the trustees? Anything else you guys want to address or talk about, or?
No.
How about those cubs? I don't know. No discussion there?
In London.
In London, yeah. Okay.